Listen, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance. All right, welcome everyone to the October 2nd meeting and welcome back Louis George.
I'm back baby.
Glad to have you back. I know that was, we were all worried about you. Lot of prayers. All right, minutes of September 18th, we have a motion to approve the minutes of September 18th. So, a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. We have a motion to approve the financial report.
I'll make a motion that we approve the financial report from date listed.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Have a second. Any discussion on the financial report at all? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have a presentation. We have the Local Government Insurance Trust. Is come on down and Lieutenant Finch, come on down. We have our chief there and tell us what we got going on here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Council. My name is Matt Peter. I'm the Executive Director of Local Government Insurance Trust. Just in case you don't know, we are a small insurance company, only insure towns, counties, cities here in the state. Ensure your building, your vehicles, I can ensure you for the things that you do. We have a grant program that we run every year. This year, the town of Elton has applied for one of our grants in the fall cycle. And our risk management committee has approved that grant. And we have approved a grant. I just want to make sure I get this right. The Dark Root Technologies Vehicle Dynamics and Low Light Know-It Course. It is a program that is going to work to enhance the knowledge and skills of members of the law enforcement department. Particularly with regards to the use of firearms in situations in which they may have to use those firearms. We are excited to be able to support a program like this, realizing that training dollars are hard to come by. So, our ability to support great trainings like this, we always appreciate that opportunity. I also do want to take a moment to thank you guys. You guys will be celebrating your 25th year with Legit just in a few weeks. We do appreciate your trust and partnership for the last 25 years. Today is the 10th grant that we are awarding.
All right, let's take a picture. Chiefs, you want to get into photograph there and I'll take the picture. How you like that? I'll take the picture. Come in the front, in the front here so I can go.
We do look forward to hearing what the, how the officers feel the training went. See if possible, we recommend this to other folks in the future, so.
All right, big smiles. Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I look forward to coming back in the future. Oh, you're gonna work some more than.
We'd love to have you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Hey Lou, I'm gonna bypass the agenda just for one second. I'm gonna go ahead and let you, because I know that the South Fields say it's gonna be a few more minutes and Lou, we're gonna blow through your two reports.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. The first one's the proclamation for the Elton High School Alumni Day. Mayor Commissioner of the Town of Elton to Elton High School alumni. Whereas Elton High School graduates first class in 1959. I think they are relating to the building. That's it, because I know graduated a lot of people before that. Anyway, Elton High has grown from a small school of 25 classrooms to multiple specialty learning center that educates our young men and women today while preparing them for tomorrow. And whereas for 65 years, thousands of young people have passed through the doors on the path of adulthood. And Elton High School alumni routinely reunite to connect with those who share a very special time in their lives while honoring the memory of those who have passed. Now therefore, on behalf of the Mayor Commissioner of the Town of Elton and the citizens, we hereby extend our sincere welcome home by providing an annual day of reunion for all Elton High School alumni. And further, under the authority vested in me as the mayor of the Town of Elton, I hereby declare the first Friday in October of every year Elton High School Alumni Day. I know you're a Bo Manor person.
It hurts me.
But I'm Elton High.
There you go. Do we have a motion to accept proclamation P 57-2024 Elton High School Alumni Day? In a second, I just want to say that I've gone to so many of them and my wife graduated from Elton High. Everyone believes I was in the class with them. I don't know how that they figured that, but we are. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You noticed I didn't make that motion.
I know you did. All right.
The other item I had was the, there's some photographs I, I think they're up there somewhere. That are of the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm listening. I'm telling them they can move, move forward if they want.
Oh, okay. The UV system that's currently at the wastewater treatment plant is the last stage of treatment for wastewater. And it's been operating for 16 years. Obviously, the UV lamps and everything have been replaced over time. But I was recently approached by Infromark and there, I've been working with them for several months about replacing that UV system with a Trojan 3000 UV system for what pets wear. The price tentatively identified for this project is $860,000. So it's not a chicken feed project. But I'm, I'm working with Tourline Construction. They're the ones that are going to build it. And with another company for Trojan that supplies the equipment for the UV system. And KCI is the engineer. So we do have familiarity with them doing this project. But as soon as we nail down the final pricing and the work authorization formats, then we'll, I'll bring it to the board for approval. But well, you can use ARPA money for this.
You don't need any motion on that at all now?
Uh, no, now. Not now. I don't, I have to have some finite numbers first. But anyways, wanted to whet your appetites for this project. They want to bring it up and you'll say, oh, I know everything about it, so. Yeah, I just wanted to be able to show what the UV, you know, it looks like. It's a pretty elaborate system, you know, for a plan.
Thank you Lou. Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, listen, I'd be remiss to not introduce former county executive Alan McCarthy in the back. Alan, thank you for coming to one of our meetings. Are you running for office again?
Oh, there you go.
I like it. I like it.
You heard it here. Okay, listen, we've got the South Fields update. We got Mr. Ray Jackson. You're gonna do a little presentation for us and bring us up to date.
Well, I'm gonna do a quick update on existing South Fields and then have a conversation with you if we could about the park. So, very quickly, I'm gonna run down all the parcels just to give you a status update on the development. I think everybody's aware that the infrastructure is, is, is moving ahead in full force. The boulevard's been cut in, the base paving's been done. Water and sewers is being done. As you well know, the water tower's been built. So we're making great progress there. Expect to have the majority of that in by the end of this year. DR, or excuse me, yes, DR Horton parcel C was approved at the last planning commission, the final approval with some conditions. We expect to be, to start breaking ground parcel C, which is a single-family detached housing again before the end of this year. So probably December. So that's very positive. Bray Star, who's on parcel D, the multifamily residential, as you well know, they've begun construction. They actually have some of their foundations in place. A lot of their infrastructure is being done using the same site contractor as we are, which is S E H. They're making tremendous progress. So we're very happy with them. Mike Brown's parcel, which is the sports complex, Mike continues to process his plans. He's going through the bonding process, as you all know. There's been a couple glitches here and there, but you know, Mike is resilient and has got his, the pedal to the metal. So we're excited about him starting and I think I can honestly say that that should be the end of this year as well.
That's everybody's plans.
Yeah. So we're, we're, we're hoping that we get to the finish line there as well. There is a little bit of another positive update parcel H, which is across 213, which is also DR Horton. They've already started beginning, they're beginning planning. So we're encouraged about that. And, and we're talking to them about different product lines and different product types. And I know Gene Grumal's been involved in some of the planning commission hearing. So we're excited to see the plans there. I want to show a quick video. So one of the things that we've been talking about, and we have been talking about this for some time, is what we're calling Frenchtown North Regional Park. It's, it's about 55 acres in total. It was originally cut out of the pud, if you recall, because it sits in the critical area, okay? So what we've been doing is we've been going back and forth with some potential designs and, and Mike Brown and his team has been engaged because they will be the operator and the owner of the RV park that's planted. Where the plan is, is to fully integrate the RV park into the sports complex. They go hand in hand with each other. So what we're showing you is some, just some general renderance of the park. This is what the park would look like. There are no definitive plans, okay? So what, what, we've had some, some, there's been ongoing conversations with planning department and there's, there's been some impediments to get this thing. And we, I talked internally to our team and one of the suggestions we had, and this is an ask that I have of you all tonight, is, and I, and I spoke to KCI about this this morning. So Nick Barrett is, is head of land entitlement for KCI. He oversees the Delaware office of KCI. So I've been a client of KCI's for 25 plus years. I think you all know that. We ended up using Morris Ritchie on this job because of the potential conflict of the engineers. What a, a, a potential idea here in, in a way for us to navigate through this process, I would like you all to consider, is for us to engage KCI. So I think that there's a tremendous amount of comfort, especially with Gene and her staff. KCI is obviously a nationally recognized engineering firm, full service engineering firm. They do your third-party reviews now. So what the plan would be is for us to engage KCI in their Sparks office. We already have a lot of the work, a lot of the base mapping, a lot of the environmental stuff has already been done by Fred Ward here locally. And, and we could, we could include Fred Ward in this conversation. But I think for, for getting Gene comfortable and staff here comfortable, I think if you all would consider a conflict waiver and allow us to hire KCI to process this, I think it'll go a lot smoother. I think that there'll be a level of confidence here in the town, having your own engineer process this. And, and I just want to remind everybody, the funding is in place for this. We have a $500,000 grant that, that we got two years ago from the state of Maryland. Mayor Alt and I worked diligently on that. We've been awarded this grant. The Town of Elton has been awarded this grant. And we have been in communication with the grant administrator. We have, we have proffered to the town a memo of agreement, which basically outlines how we can turn the property over to you. And basically what, what the process will be is we bring in KCI hypothetically to be the, the engineer and they plan it out with your approval, your guidance and direction. Anything that, that needs to be done with regards to waivers or variances and all, you all have to ask for. It's your park. It's not our park. The, the intent is to get it approved and deed the land over to the town. We want to simultaneously make sure we're, we're planning for the RV park at the same time to make sure all the environmental things are laid out properly and everything is taken into consideration. So I picked up the phone this morning and I called Nick Barrett at KCI. I asked him if he'd be willing to participate. He was absolutely encouraged about the conversation and excited to be able to work on this. So my ask would be for you all to consider that, allowing us to hire KCI. Because again, I think it'll give Gene a tremendous amount of comfort. That's important to all of us. There would probably need to be a conflict waiver signed. Engage them and then start this process. I, I want to share this with you. We're, we're doing a similar type thing right now in Baltimore City. We started about a year ago. We brought in a third-party engineer in Baltimore City Field Operations. And Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're, we're 30% construction drawings already. So we're gonna be shoveling the ground end of the year in Baltimore City.
And the process was exactly the same as what we proffered here. There was a memorandum of understanding between ourselves and the city with an agreement saying, as soon as the plans are approved and the funding is in place to build it, then we will transfer the property free and clear.
And one of the things that we've done, and one of the things that I think we can do here is we've created an opportunity, because this is truly an amenity for the town as well as for South Fields. There's a benefit, a huge benefit to South Fields here. So one of the things that we proffered to the city and is part of the memo of understanding is we, we paid for the maintenance of the park with a third party, which is a nonprofit in perpetuity. So Baltimore City is not, doesn't have to do trash, Baltimore City doesn't clean the waterfront. Baltimore City doesn't remove snow. And I think what we could do is we could do a similar type structure here. There's been some people that have approached us. I think you know Kelly Benson, for instance, has come and wanted to, to do a kayak launch. And I think what you do if, if you have some ancillary businesses like that, you can use those monies, the, the lease payment that Kelly would, would pay to, to facilitate all the maintenance in the park. We can help coordinate that. We've done it. So I'll share any and all of that information with you. We have sent over, I think about this time last year, we sent over a memo of agreement is what this one is called. It's, it's simplistic in nature. I would ask that your, the town council look at it and, and see if it, it makes sense. But I think that, that, you know, the opportunity that we have, especially with the funding in place from the state of Maryland, I, I think that it really, we really need to take the next step here. It doesn't cost the town a nickel. And if it's a manpower issue, the way we wrote, the, the way we, we resolved that is we bring in KCI to do the design, the planning and all on your behalf. We would be the stores. We would help. We would help process it. But you, you should have a, a sense of comfort in that you've got your own engineer doing the work. So that was, that was an important part of the conversation. I think that the steps that we would need to take is there would be a conflict waiver that would need to happen. And that, then I think that memo of agreement would need to be vetted and would need to be agreed to. Short of that, the design, you know, the concepts, I would encourage anybody and everybody to be involved in. So.
I, I would say to you that the concept in general is, is hitting spot on with kind of what I felt the vision should be for the town of Baltimore. What's that?
For the park.
For the park, yes. Yes.
On the waterfront. Okay.
On the waterfront.
When we talk about park, I don't know if you're talking about the waterfront park or RV park.
So I.
Because I'm thoroughly confused.
So there's, I use the word park generally. It's really two separate pieces. You're right. There's the waterfront section and that's 10 to 15 acres.
That waterfront section is what we got the state of money, state of Maryland money for.
That's right, to design that. That's right.
How did the RV park come in here? If I've been out with town, I'm confused.
So the RV park is the second section of it?
Where did that come from? At what point? It's the first I'm hearing of.
The RV park?
Yeah.
I think we've.
Am I the last one?
No, I think we've talked about it.
An RV park?
Yes.
Officially.
In concept. Now I have to go through all the planning.
Where, I mean, I know where it's at. Where's this RV?
Light it up again.
So. That's no, no problem.
It could be, you know, I apologize.
No, 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 I apologize to you for not being more thorough here. I should have had an aerial of the RV park.
It'll, it'll show, it'll show. It's in the woods. Yeah, it showed it here in the woods.
Well, I know it showed it.
It's between parcel C, the sports complex, and then this piece. So there's 55 acres. There, that was removed from the pud. That's, that, do you have?
So it's not currently in the book?
It's not in the book.
This is not.
So the ground that I own. And, and the idea would be to subdivide that ground into two parcels.
There it is. Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm relating to the pud. And certainly, you know.
No, this was.
It was not in the pud.
It was, it was taken out of the pud. I apologize. When we initially came in, we wanted parcels A and B, which were these, this was labeled A here, the waterfront, and that was gonna be a marina and a condo building. And then B was gonna be a condo building as well. And we removed it from the pud because it sat in a critical area. And your ordinance doesn't allow acres in a critical area to be in a pud. So we removed that 55.
So it's not going back in the pud. It's just part of.
That's right.
We developed a plan.
That's correct.
And why do we need, why do you choose KCI again, of the long term?
I think it's a, it's a comfort level with Gene. We've been having the conversation with Gene for probably about two years now. I, I brought in an engineer from Easton, Maryland, who is renowned critical area planner. And, and he went through some of the processes and, and there was just, there were some impediments in Gene's mind. So what I'm trying to do is get her comfortable by using an engineer that she's familiar with.
And with the same conversation, you highlighted over and over about the conflict interest waiver. Lead me back for me and maybe for the board that don't know what exactly is the conflict.
So KCI, the Sparks office of KCI would be doing the plans. The Delaware office of KCI would be reviewing the plans. That's what the conflict waivers.
He's an engineering, I'll be honest.
And the alternative is, is to bring in a third-party engineer to review KCI's plans, which is, it, it's, it's dual.
Who pays for that?
It, it's gonna be paid for out of state grant. Either, either way, somebody's reviewing KCI's plans.
The good part is, I would, I would think, and I may ask Louis to give me his spin on this. We usually revert back to KCI because they do all our planning in Town of Elton anyway. They know where everything's at. And that's a good part. I'm, I'm saying that's a good part.
That's a insane part.
That's a good part, I think, that he's adding KCI in because we end up going to them anyway. I think, am I right Lou?
Yeah, KCI is our engineer.
So one of the, I guess one of the comments I'll, I'll just make about KCI is that if, if we could, I, I remember when the pud was coming in and there was some discussion about whether allowing KCI to do the initial work instead of Morris and Ritchie. And we didn't sign a conflict waiver at that point. But if hindsight was 2020, I think I would have signed that waiver and allowed KCI to do the whole pud. Knowing that the quality of work is there, right? I mean, it comes right down to it. I mean, they're one of the top 10 firms in the country and we've been partners with them since, I think, 1994, 1996.
And they wanted to do the work.
And they want, they wanted to do the work.
There's also precedent. So the wellhouse that got built was both designed and reviewed by KCI, same office. So there would be even more safeguards in this than you had in your own review of your own plans for the wellhouse in South Fields.
But they were designing it all on our behalf.
And they'll be designing on your behalf here.
Exactly.
So that's where the disconnect is a little bit, because the intent is Gene that we're deeding the ground over to you. And I think that's been the disconnect the whole time is that it, it's not our park. I don't want it, I don't.
No, I understand that part completely. I, I think I'm losing a little bit of it when you talk about the RV.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I, I have to check my notes. I, I made a presentation to the Mayor Commissioners at least a year ago. And we had visual representations of the RV park. And I'll check my notes and I'll, I'll email you back when we did that. I'm not sure if you were here or not.
I'm sorry.
You, you might not have been here.
And it was at some occasion.
Absolutely. And it delineated the area of what, what we call the waterfront area where, where there's potential for an amphitheater with some outdoor concerts and there was a kayak launch. Do you remember all that conversation?
That would I do. That's what you, how do you access the RV park? What, what?
We don't know yet. That, that's what the engineers are gonna help us to design. We don't know if it's coming down Frenchtown. We don't know if it's gonna go through the boulevard. We just don't know yet. So that's what the, the grant we got from the state of Maryland was to study that, to figure out. We might come back and find out it's unbuiltable. We can't do it.
But you haven't even built open.
Yep. So what I ended up doing, just FYI, is I incurred some expense and we hired Fred Ward. Ryan processed it. We did some environmental studies. Louis went back there himself, took pictures. That was a year, maybe even longer ago. So that, that was the original set of plans that we sent you guys. That's when we, I came in here and I said, I'm gonna apply for a state grant on your behalf. Okay, so that was the, that's when all those pictures were shown. That included in RV park. I, I apologize.
That's probably the part that for some reason, that's.
Gotcha. We, there's some other, do you have the original still photo pictures of the RV?
It's okay. I mean, I'm sure I.
I can send them to you. It went, this went back.
It's fine.
It started with the planning commission when we went sports park originally for the preliminary plan approval. And they were adamant about us making room for RVs. And we said that that would not be possible in the park.
But only for your use.
For, no, no, no. Well, at the time, they were trying to get support for it. They didn't care where, whether we put it on our property or not. But they wanted to know where the RVs would be able to go. And at the time, I told them it wouldn't be on our parcel as it sat right there because of inter-rerequirement requirement.
But I was under the impression the RV, and I don't want to, I don't want to labor this, were for your out-of-town visitors who were coming from afar, who, who arrived in an RV.
Oh, sure. So yes.
That's what it was.
That's what this is proposed.
Absolutely. But then that's why.
They were asking you about, yeah, was any parking without one.
That's right. Correct. And I said at the time, we couldn't do it on that park. But since then, we've been, there's a lot of water under the bridge.
This is, come on, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And Mike, it's proposed that Mike would, would purchase that ground and be the operator of that. It would be.
It goes hand in hand with the sports park. It does. I mean, the fact is, if anyone travels for travel sports, I just went, I guess it was in August, I went down to Dewey with my family and there was probably 20 RVs sitting in the park. I mean, sitting there. And it really wasn't, in my opinion, it wasn't the best view to have 20 of them in the parking lot. Right?
Right.
It wasn't an actual RV park, but that's how many people travel.
And the beauty of having the park there is that, given that the town doesn't have necessarily dedicated rangers or, you know, a parks and recs services, that having a private RV park there, they could actually act as the stewards for the public section of the park. They could be the ones that could put the chain across from dust till dawn if that's when you as the town decide you want it to be open or they're the ones who can be in charge of emptying the trash cans. Everyone's gonna make sure that the beach is clean.
Yeah, we actually committed to that. The staff would, would handle the RV park and the, and the work for the town as part of the.
Listen, if we, if we can, yeah, if we could ever get this pulled off, you know, Elton would have a destination.
We need to start, we need to start a process of planning. And we have the funding in place.
So my question is, will you provide with some documentation so that we can review it and?
We'll send it to you tomorrow. We'll send you a memo of agreement, which is a baseline document, right? So it'll take some conversations, depending on what you all want. We'll share with you some of the public documents on the other part that we did as well, just to give you a general flavor.
And part of this reason is, we've had this grant for two years and really, we haven't done anything.
We, we collectively have. We, we collectively haven't, we, we did, we did the base mapping, we did the environmental. But there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done, but to answer your question, we, we're gonna lose the grant. We're gonna lose the grant, so, um, it doesn't cost the town anything to start processing these plans. Again, we might come back, KCI might come back and say, look, it's too big of a lift. It, it's not gonna, it, it's, you gotta cross this or do that, or you have this much usable land.
How do you retain the grant, have to start the process or do you have to get those certain reports?
So, in order to pull from the grant, the town pull from the grant. Uh, the town has to be an equitable title owner of the ground, which means just a memo of understanding in place with us. Saying that once this is planned and, and facilitated, we deed the ground over to you. That means you are the equitable owner of the ground. Um, then you can submit or repaint it of any bills that you incur with regards to the planning of the park. Ryan personally spoke to the grant administrator, another person on our team spoke to the grant administrator. We've done it and we are doing it in one another job.
And just to be clear on the process, this is a, none of these are cookie cutter, we can't give you a. Here's the twelve steps to get there, because step three might dictate we modify our plans and go in another direction. What we're really looking for from the town is. This is where we'd like to go, this is our end destination. And we'll try and go down this path with you, we'll give you all the efforts to try and make something like this happen, and if we find out that it's not. Feasible, we'll figure out what else that you want and how we can get that direction, but we just need to start moving forward.
Very good. Any questions for?
Thank you.
Right, with everything else, your presentation was impeccable. Will you name that code after me, can that be called all code or something up there?
Excuse me?
Can you name that code after me? All code or something?
That went on stop in here tonight, so it's difficult. Thank you all.
Thank, thank you. Just in closing, I would tell you, thank you for doing that and uh. Uh, I, I. I, I, I'm pretty excited, we can get to that point, that's an exciting, exciting times. All right, uh. Yes.
So we'll find out how we get started.
So the uh. Uh, let's see, there is, um, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just say that uh. I was, okay, here we go, so. We have a uh. Elton alumni event coming up. And we received from Elton, a group from, let's see, let me see what the group here is called. The Chesapeake Charities. Uh, care of the Dave Testerman Legacy Scholarship. Uh, they asked if we had any interest of donating any dollars to that scholarship fund. Uh, I don't wanna ask the board tonight, but give us some thoughts for next week. If the board wants to make any type of donation.
But if you're already giving two thousand.
We are.
And you're doing the same. Um, what you're doing.
I know, we're doing the same, we can increase yours. No, you have, we've increased yours and, and I, I, I feel the same way, I really do, I. I just don't wanna, I don't wanna say that we don't wanna give to the alumni scholarship, but.
But we do.
We do care, but we do give, we do give it to Elton High School every year.
If a, a person requested this, you know that?
Uh, they probably didn't, you know, we could, you know something, we'll respond back in that manner that the town of Elton currently gives.
You, you are right, you're, you're all the entity in giving that out, I don't think you wanna have a conflict of interest and someone else wants to do it. Or they may have fun, they want to give it to the town of Elton, to hold this for us, or do whatever, but.
I'm with you. All right. So you'll respond back to them and let them know we're currently, we, I love the idea of what they're doing, but it's also, um, we're currently doing it. We are. Okay, uh, Jean, you have anything to say?
I, I have one thing.
Yes.
Um. I was traveling on Delaware Avenue yesterday. Uh, heading toward Drew Forty. And, and I couldn't, like, one of the neighbors slowed down, and there was traffic behind me, and then there was some slowing down in front of me, but. I noticed there was a, um, woman on the side of the road. It looked like she had a full cart of groceries. And she looked a little dis- shover. And I also noticed there was a town of Elton truck. With two of our workers, but I couldn't know who they were, and I, I had to keep going. So I called Tracy and asked her if she could research that for me, and she did. And apparently this woman was taking her groceries out from food line, because you could tell from the bags, you know how distinctive they are. And I guess she got to some point where the car tipped there and she fell. So two of our workers stopped, they were helping her. They were slowing down traffic, they, they helped her, taken her around, um. And I found out it was Jeremy Kinnler and Matt Donnelly. So I just wanted to mention that because I was impressed, um, with how they were helping her. You could tell she was very disoriented. So, thank you, the envy. Please, let them know how much we appreciate their, their, um, work.
Charles? Then we receive a report, or if you wanna call it a report, it may not be, it could be this and that. That you have some accidents at your job site, has that decreased, increased, or status quo? Because when you have accidents, certainly it affects your job performance and what the men can do and cannot do, so. Is there an update or is there a comment, uh, in reference to that?
Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. But there's something that's happened.
I don't follow it, I, your work performance is that your job site is doing just fine.
Well, I mean, there's, there's nothing out of the ordinary at the time, that's why I'm just questioning. It was, it was exceptional, and we had problems, I'd reach out, so.
I could do another run with this, but maybe I need to talk to you one on one about.
There you go.
And, and the second is, uh, Louis, welcome back, I know, um. It's almost like a celebration for you coming home. But, um, we certainly wanna thank yourself for what she has done in your absence and your staff, to be honest with you. Because, uh, we have not been taking a hostage in the town of Elton by anybody. Basically, everything is fine, thank you.
Staff does, did a great job.
Carol?
I have nothing to put.
Robert?
Um, I would like to say, uh, that Fall Fest was a great success this year, the weather was. Maybe the best weather we've had, at least in a, in a decade or so. Everybody had a great time and the people stayed later, I noticed. Usually by five o'clock, you know, a half of them have gone, now we're, they're all gone, but people stayed. And that was just to see it, the down, um, the parking lot out back was in nice, uh, condition, but that was well done. And just don't forget that Elton Alumni Night is Friday night.
And who's the band playing Friday?
I heard a band's playing Friday.
There's an awesome band playing Friday night, you'll never see him with Patriots Glen, but. That it? That's it. All right, very good, uh, this is the time we open up the floor for anything, anyone that has anything to say for the good of the town of Elton? If you do, please come on up and state your name and address and we'll address it. Seeing none?
I was just waiting to get everybody else a chance.
All right.
I just wanted to remind everybody that the Halloween parade is coming up on the eighteenth. Um, Mayor, thank you for agreeing to be the emcee, I would love to have, um, somebody or somebodies. Join us as a judge, so if any of you would like to be the judge, um, I would welcome you to do that, we're still recruiting for that, I still need one or two. Um, and I think we should have any of you join us, I appreciate it. And, well, that was my next thing, you have to decide what our costumes are gonna be this year, what would you like to group, you decided last year, I think.
I didn't wear it in costume.
Yes, you did. You decided we were gonna be real life superheroes last year.
Oh, that's what we were.
Yes. And I don't remember what you wanted.
I think, uh, Rob, it was your turn to pick this year. Can't remember what the heck we did last year.
You were a cop, you were a cop. You did real life superheroes.
Oh, yeah. Okay, what are you dressed up as?
I'll look at pictures.
Yeah, no, I picked that last year, you did a superhero.
Yeah, so you guys can think about that, you only have a couple days.
Only, okay.
It's coming up quick.
That's not real life.
No, I can't, I'll, now I'm gonna have to look at pictures. Um, the other thing is, we have our, the up in the lines of the very first fundraiser coming up in November, our Survivor Night, and I'll share. A video with you, um, and Chief, thank you for purchasing your ticket. We thank you for that support, and I would like to have anybody else join us, that would be interested. It's the first Thursday in November, the seventh. Chance to win ten thousand dollars.
Very good, you can put me down as a judge.
You wanna be a judge? Second, you're also gonna come up with a costume theme?
Uh, I would, I want me to.
And I love that.
How many judges?
Well, I'll probably have five judges, well, yeah, five, and then the mayor will be the emcee.
Five judges, you see. All right, very good. Anyone else have anything to say? Uh, one comment I'd like to ask, uh, Tamika, how's it going with the, uh, audit?
Um.
Requested an extension, remember?
Yes, I'm, I'm requesting a bit extension, um, just in case, because I think we might need one, I wanna get it in early. Uh, just in case, um. The admin department, HR department. Um, who else? Admin, HR. There's several departments that I requested and asked for different, um. Um, requests from the audits, from the auditors, uh, to the different departments, I sent them out and everybody. Direct, it responded to me within twenty-four hours. Um, so it's going pretty well, it's, it's going good, everybody that I'm asking, um, for documents. For the requests from the auditors, they, they're, everybody's participating. And everybody's give, turning over the documentation to me very fast.
And has Santora?
Oh, oh, yeah, and Santora is also helping me with, um. So what we're doing now is we're cleaning up the trial balance. Um, and I spoke to, I had a meeting with, um, CLA a couple days ago, maybe yesterday. Um, and, yeah, Monday, we had a meeting on Monday. Um, and I, I had a few questions, he was gonna go everything, go over everything, but I already read all the requests. And I already started asking for, um, documentation from, uh, different departments. Got everything back that I asked for within twenty-four hours, except two things, because we were waiting for some documents from Nationwide. Um, CLA is helping me clean up the trial balance, uh, of course, you guys already know. The cash, uh, the revenues, uh, the documentation I needed from the county, from the, um, the state. Um, so we're moving along, um, and everybody to, I'm asking for, um, everybody's participating, so it's, it's not. It's going, it's going well.
And the, the, the software that we have, the Simons program?
Edmonds.
Edmonds.
Edmonds, Edmonds, so the Edmonds program, have we been able to coordinate any training for staff yet on that?
I sent, I put in a ticket, but I believe I was in a meeting and I missed it, but tomorrow morning I'm gonna respond. Back to them, because what I did was, um, I requested that they go in and apply to every user. There's a, um, it's not an icon, it's in a list, it's a drop down list and a help dropdown. It should say support ticket, so that they could put, they can ask questions and put in support. Put in a support ticket and inside the support ticket is where you ask your question. Now, if people don't get their questions answered, or if Edmund says to them, hey, you. We can't answer that, we believe you would need additional training because this would take longer than, let's say, forty-five minutes. Um, then you, they'll tell you, hey, you're gonna need probably additional training on that. But the first step is to give everybody access that little, um, that little click, I would say click. Um, I call it, it's a title, it's not an icon, it's like a dropdown, so inside that dropdown, it should say support ticket. So I did request for them to go through and make sure all of our Edmund users have. Access to be able to submit a support ticket, so they can ask questions.
So is there, are we using the system, we're using the system?
We are using, definitely using.
Okay, and we're entering every day?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
Okay, um. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone on the, uh, Zoom meeting have anything to say?
I'm asking them to unmute. Getting no response.
Seeing none, meeting adjourned.